Good evening. We have a call on a planning board meeting to order.
Mr. Chairman, before you start, I would like to make a statement. In regards to complaints that are flying around town and out of town and everywhere else, what happened at that March 5 meeting in no way, shape, or manner was to intimidate anyone, embarrass anyone. And since then, I have talked to the owners, I have talked to the contractor, and to talk to where they or their families intimidated or ashamed or anything about it. And they said, "No." I was very supportive from day one with this project, and I'm very supportive of the project today. Out of a population of 5,120 people, there's a handful of complaints. And out of 3,894 voters, again, a handful of complaints. I've served on other elected boards, and no matter how this board or any other board votes, or talks, or says something, there's always somebody that doesn't like it. There's no way that anyone can vote in today's world that everybody's going to be happy. And if you try to appease everybody, you're not going to get anything done. I come from the corporate world, not the municipal world. The corporate world doesn't spend other people's money. They spend their money. They know how to get the job done. And that's the way I do things, whether the board is upset of it, they have given me no indication that they are. And I leave my door open all the time for anyone to come, anytime, any day, I don't care what hour you want to call me, I'm there. And if you don't care for me, tell me that. Everybody has a right for their opinion. And I learned that a long time ago. You just, you don't stub your nose about someone that you think they're not intelligent. They may say something that they see out of their eyes that you don't. And that's true over and over again. And again, if somebody's offended, I apologize to you. But in my heart, there's no intention of any wrongdoing. Or will there be anything wrongdoing? I'm 73 years old. I dedicated most of my adult life to this town of Habley. And that was to save the taxpayers' money so all of us, the young, the old, can reside in this town without being taxed and forced to leave out of this town. So that's my statement, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, Mr. Michalski. Mr. Pelosi, you're up first.
Yes. The Smith Schoolhouse we currently have under construction, we're in the final phase. We weren't able to, at the time, with site plan, come in for a sign approval. We didn't know what they wanted to put on the building at the time. We're proposing a 38-inch by 128-inch, roughly 32-square-foot sign to go on the front. It will not be illuminated. The colors will be a dark blue, because this is basically the color of metal roof you over the bridge, and white. It's not going to stand out, you're not going to be seeing as much of the UMass sign, which is twice the size.
Wait, what way is that sign facing?
It's facing toward the UMass schoolhouse. If you're looking down from the property going...
I mean, is it facing north, south, east, or west?
North.
Facing north, or facing...
If you're going toward North Hampton, you might see it. Going towards Habley, you won't. At all.
So from Route 9, you can see that?
Yeah, it's quite a ways down.
What kind of facing, Route 9?
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes, sir.
Why didn't you bring a color print in, what does that look like?
I don't have a color print of the sign. It's a dark blue background with a white letter in Smith Row.
I was just asking that question.
Is that one Russell Street?
Yes, one.
Could it be Smith School Rowing?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the sign.
Second.
Do you want to see your file?
You can have it.
I second that motion.
I thought I wanted to have him start.
Okay. Any other discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
But you?
Have a good night to Jerry White.
Tyler Gilmet?
Gilmet? Yes. My apologies, my first time on the planning board, I'm not familiar with how things go. I own a brewing company, based in Williamsburg, Brewmaster Jack.
What is it?
Brewmaster Jack. We've been around about eight years now. And just contacted landlord recently on Middle Street. He had a property to lease, and just rented out a lot. And had talked with him about the possibility of building a brewery facility there.
Is that a bazaar move?
It's a duplex with a barn attached. We'd be looking to lease out the barn. It's a three...
That's a bazaar move.
Bazaar garage, right, yeah.
Kind of dotted with quarters. So I went and spoke to the licensing coordinator and the building inspector. They both told me to come here and talk to the planning board and see if there's any objections, or if it's zoned properly. I'm kind of just looking to see what the next steps are to...
What are you going to be using it as?
Well, we would produce some beer there and hopefully have a small taproom on the ground-level floor. It'd be a very small production. The way we produce now is under contract at Brewmaster Town in Williamsburg. So we don't own any equipment. We rent it on a per-batch basis, pay them a fee to use it, and then we distribute through wholesalers. What I'd be looking for is a retail location where we can sell direct-to-consumer.
So this is going to be a brewing place or selling place?
Both.
Well, I know, this is a microbrewery, essentially.
Yes.
They fall into a special category in zoning. I don't remember what it is.
I don't know.
Is there any kind of smells going to be radiating out from this?
No. Most of the smell that you're suggesting with the brewery is from boiling. We would boil off-site at this contract facility in Williamsburg where we produce now, and then ship it in.
A year so ago, we approved a brewery up on Russell Street.
Yes.
Right?
A taproom.
That's not a brewery. There's a brewery there.
No, no. He just serves. No, the brewery was the...
They have one in Lawrence.
Yeah. The taproom is just a barn.
I thought you were talking brewery.
Barry Roberts, where he's going to sell the small, I don't know, growlers. That's right, yep. That was, was in the center of Amherst. Point blank on the name.
Is this the garage here? Is that the...
Rails.
The garage?
There is a garage. So if you were to walk out of the back of this building...
Is the garage here?
There's a...
Also, this is not the garage.
Oh, this is the actual backside of the barn on the house.
Correct, yes. So I just outlined the barn area in red.
By way of clarification, what's the red outline? Is that where the brewery is going to go?
So this is the barn with the residence here. There's a little garage right there.
Yep. And this is the house?
Correct.
Anything to provide protection?
Parking. Are you going to...
That's yet to be determined.
Okay, so parking is going to be a problem. This is a pre-existing, non-conforming use as a house. Now you're going to put a business in there, so that's going to be a tough call.
Yeah, you'll need site plan approval, for sure. Because if it's not a business today, so it's a change of use.
Right. And if you're going to be boiling stuff, you would need the approval from the fire chief if you're going to do anything like that.
Yeah, we wouldn't be boiling there. That's what I'm saying, that we boil off-site.
You got sewer hookup? Well, that's...
There is a sewer there in there.
Yeah, there is sewer there.
Even if it wasn't here, you could use injector pipe pump and pump it.
So you're right.
Right off to Route 9.
So this is going to be more wholesale than retail?
No, no, more retail than wholesale. We operate now as a wholesale. We're just looking for a retail component.
Where's your fracking going to be?
That's what we were just saying, yet to be determined. Property manager who I spoke to a couple weeks ago, I guess owns the property next door too, which has a big backyard. He thought that it might be zoned in a way that he could put a parking lot back there, but he wasn't sure.
So this is all zone business? Because it's zone business from Route 9 up to the bike path?
Okay.
Okay, so you're in a business zone. However, parking is, for that site to say it's tight would probably be an understatement.
Correct. And I can't say strongly enough how small this taproom would be. The main goal is to have a place where we can sell cans of bottles to go. And if we can have a taproom on top of that, great.
Yeah. As long as it's a business zone, you still need the parking area, whether or not you're going to have, you know, business zone requires parking period, whether...
That's two for one.
Irrespective of everything else.
Is there any room for you to put parking in off a minimum square feet?
That's what I talked to the property manager about. He thought there was a way that he could do that, because he owns the property next door as well.
Really, what you're going to have to do is you're going to have to hire somebody competent to look over the site and go through the zoning bylaw and see how it can be met to meet all the various aspects of the zoning bylaw.
To parking.
Okay.
And would I come back with a site plan to propose?
Yeah, the first thing before you get into too much money, as far as a whole lot of stuff, is, you know, have them look at the site and your use and et cetera.
He used Randy Iser, so...
Oh, no, this is from the property manager.
Randy, this guy right here, he does that all the time.
Yeah, there's several companies, a lot of companies that do that. Randy is one of them.
Right here.
So you could go around and, you know, talk to a couple different companies and see, obviously, get a price on doing a preliminary, and then come back to us with a preliminary, depending on whether you can meet the requirements of the zoning, and before you, like I said, before you invest a lot of other money, see, get the preliminary idea, or the preliminary plan, and then we can discuss.
So I would go to say, Randy, ask for a quote on...
If you tell what you want to do, you know, there's one of several, he's one of several companies that do that. You know, there's Mark Donald in Northampton, Berkshire Design, you know, there's a few of them that will do that. So I don't want to say, "Go to Randy." I don't want to say something like...
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
Just want to make sure you're clear on that. But any of those several companies that do that, they're familiar with their zoning bylaws, what is a minimum requirement, and you can get it priced out of them and go from there. And they come back with a preliminary, and then we can look at it and give you a good idea. Yeah, you've got a pretty good chance of meeting the bylaw. Why not?
Okay, so before he even produces a plan, I would come...
Go to see one, get somebody, go to see one of those businesses. Tell them, basically, this plan, what you want to do, and you want a preliminary plan as far as will, can it meet the zoning bylaw? And they'll know, they do this all the time. They know what they have to do. They know what we're looking at.
What if you had an agreement with a butter about the Falls parking lot? Is that a consequence?
Let's find out whether it fits at all. Yes.
Right.
But it's certainly not going to fit without it.
Right. Well, we don't know that. We don't know that. Let them do that, let them make that decision and study.
But is it, is it right for one partial to lease another partial for parking for that?
No, that is not...
That's not allowed?
Not currently allowed.
Right, because that's what he's talking about.
Well, the question is, will this lot support the proposed business? Let's find out. This is, you don't have enough information. You can get the information you need. So that's step one, is find out if it will work, if it can be made to work, even close.
All right, so I'll get that site plan, and I'll be back.
Good luck. We meet the first Tuesday or Monday. You can just walk in unannounced and just sign in and give the plan when you're ready.
Okay.
We can talk about it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Good luck. Josh Klein?
I'm here on behalf of WS Development. We own and operate Non-Comms Mall. As you guys are familiar, we're working on the out parks redevelopment currently. We're currently under construction. We're hoping to turn over to our tenants in June and July. We're really excited. We're aiming to have tenants open as early as fall 2019. So we've come to the point where a big component of the design is going to be signage. We're working with our tenants, our retailers, our restaurant right now to kind of develop the package. And we wanted to kind of come to the board and get a little feedback to relay to these tenants, to kind of help guide the design and kind of keep everything on track in terms of timing. So one of, this is the rendering that we previously presented to the board that's been approved. And this design was really intended to be for internally illuminated signage. We understand that the supplemental amendment, that is not the case, we're not allowed to do that. We understand the bylaw. It is not permitted. However, we're seeking kind of feedback from the board today if this would be kind of a path we could continue down and relay to our tenants and kind of get approval to do internal signage at this location.
I would say I am 100% against internally illuminated sign. And if you go for a zoning variance to the ZBA, I will personally go up to the ZBA meeting and speak against it. We have held a very hard line on not internally illuminated sign. Backlit signs are fine, externally illuminated signs are fine, but internally illuminated, we have been against. And we're not spingling you out. We've been across the board to anybody who's come in.
No, we're 100% not here to argue with the board. We appreciate the feedback.
And we, you know, town meeting has, we've gone back to town meeting a few times in the last, I don't know how many years, probably several years ago now, to try to allow larger signs when the building is set further back from the road and everything else. And town meeting is loud and clear. No, we didn't get a majority. We need two-thirds to pass a zoning bylaw change, and we didn't even get a majority in our favor. So, you know, we're speaking for the will of the townspeople. Part of the reason that we say no illuminated signs is that your predecessors, even, you know, the people who owned Mountain Farm Small before WS Development, and everybody else on that end of Route 9, many people on that end of Route 9 are overboard. So it was a town-wide reaction to prohibit illuminated signs. So it seems unfair that the people next to you can have an illuminated sign and you can't. But the reason is, there were just too many.
No, understood. Again, we're excited about the building. We think this is going to bring something great to Route 9. And we'll definitely, you know, we're going to work with our tenants, and we'll come up with the best design that we can.
I couldn't tell you how many people have asked me, "When are the five guys going to hold?"
Soon. So if I order something from L.L. Bean's up in Freeport, it comes down here, it doesn't fit, can I return it here?
You'd have to ask the tenant. That's a good question, though. I believe so.
I'll vote for it.
What is your target date? What is your target date, though?
We're hoping to have tenants open fall of this year.
Fall of this year?
That's the goal.
The entire complex?
I can't comment on that, but we're aiming to have tenants open fall of 2019. We're on pace with construction. Everything's going together smoothly. We're excited.
Go ahead.
Well, I appreciate your time.
Look in the bylaw, it'll tell you the square footage, and actually, look across the street. That's kind of what, just to crawl in, would come in. This is what I want for this building. Comes in, we approve it, fine. So when you have the actual sign package, you want to give a final review of that?
Yes, yep. Each individual tenant will come in.
When these signs are developed, are they going to be all a uniform color, or are they going to be all mixed and match?
We have, we review and approve all the tenant signage. We're very strict on how that looks. We have a studio and a team that kind of will review that. And, you know, we're going to make sure whatever product we put out there is kind of best for us, best for the tenants, and best for the town.
One editorial comment we always make when people want bigger signs, and you're too young to remember, but we had Zares, Kmart, Stigers, Woolcocks, they had huge illuminated signs. They're no longer in business. It's not the size, it's the product.
We agree, it's the quality.
Okay, right.
Thank you, guys. I'm going to say...
All right. Nicole Berkum.
Hi.
Hello.
So I'm here on behalf of Berkum Construction, seeking to get some lots released from Sapphire Estate, which is in North Habley.
This is a little off-shadowed.
Yeah, a little off-shadowed. So we're looking to have lots 5, 6, and 15 released.
You got to pay work?
Do I have to pay work? Yeah, you have.
Okay. That's the important part.
Lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 8, 12, and 11 still need to be released from the town.
Who's again? Lots?
1, 2, 1 through 4.
Those are not sold yet?
They're not sold yet, so...
And what do you have for the others? 8 and 11?
8, 12, and 11 still need to be released.
Those will still be held?
Still be held, by the time...
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So you're releasing the ones in, 5, 6, and 15?
Please, yep.
I'll make a motion to release lots 5, 6, and 15.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Any poll?
I brought a notary with me, too.
Okay.
Was your nickname Nick?
Yeah, Nicky B.
So that's where it comes from.
You talked about over 55. Where are you thinking about putting that?
I'm not sure. My client's not sure yet.
Somewhere in Habley?
Somewhere in Habley, yeah.
Go ahead, keep them guessing.
There is a specific zone right now for that.
Okay.
Basically, the village overlay from the bridge, I believe, to the bike path is the only place that currently, and which is a bit of a zone in Habley. If you can find a other appropriate place, I'm not sure where Bill is looking, you could go for either a zoning variance or go back to town meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's got to be on sewer.
On sewer, I think it is.
Everything in the Village Center overlay district is on sewer.
Yeah, I don't, I just... And then I'm also here on behalf of myself for property located at, well, and Andrew, property located at 185 Russell Street, requesting to change the use from residential to business. We're currently...
Where's 185?
It's right across from the post office, next to the...
Oh, Paulson, okay, Paulson, yes.
Next to the East End.
Yeah.
So you need to go to site plan approval then?
Yep.
Or, well, or waive for site plan approval?
I believe that's over 1,000, it's over 1,000 square feet.
It's 1,199.
Yeah, so you need a site plan approval. What are you going to do with it?
Law office.
Law office.
So it's all going to be office?
Yeah.
No apartment or anything?
It's, we have, there's eight spots for parking, and it's just, we're only renting out two other units. And Andrew, we have an office together, so it's about three offices total.
Okay. Yeah, I guess you would need site plan approval, which is over 1,000 square feet.
Just over.
I mean, it may not be a monster thing, but that's the formality you'd have to go through.
I really don't think it's over 1,000 for the space you'd be using, though.
Does that include the garage?
Because the garage is large, very large, it's a two-car garage. And then there's also like an entrance, that's part of the garage.
Okay.
A sunroom.
We agree with you.
Perhaps the easiest thing you could do, just like we told the gentleman that was here before, we would have somebody take, look, yeah, to get the plan drawn up, say, this is what you want to do, this is what we're going to use here, so that if you're under 1,000, we could waive site plan approval.
Okay.
Okay? But we'd like to have it on record that this is such and such and such and such. It would be a lot easier.
Okay.
And that way, you're covered, and there's no disagreements down the road that, well, it's this or that or a stat, okay?
Okay, so I'm going to come in with the, we're not having any exterior changes.
Well, you, certainly, you can get a building from the site, from the assessor's office, and you know what the, you can know what the square footage is.
Yeah.
So there, if it's under 1,000...
Yeah.
We can waive site plan approval.
Okay.
If it's 1,000 or over, we have to go for site plan approval.
Okay.
So you could determine on your plan, and then you could divide it out accordingly if that's a reasonable number to work with.
But you want me to bring you the actual plan? So I was with Tim Nyhard today, and he told me just to come here, so I assume that he knew that it was under 1,000.
No. He sends, he sends a lot of people here. You know, he may or may not know. However, we need something that says for sure that it is.
Yep.
Something on paper. Something from the assessors, maybe, there was probably an appraisal telling me he purchased it.
We did, yeah.
They may have done some measurements.
Okay.
So, yeah, just, and if you can exclude out the garage, you're not going to use that for business purposes...
For the people, I know.
Then you may be okay.
Okay.
Just have to verify.
Okay.
Great.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to, I'm not going to pronounce your name right. Per Vistolar?
That's right. It's Vestorfire, but that's okay.
Okay.
So I didn't know I had to bring paper for everybody, but basically, I run a nonprofit that's named Cloazac Animal Sanctuary. We moved here last August. And if you're not familiar where we are, we are large animal at Puls.
Where are you located?
I'm looking for, I think, the authorization of putting a sign in the field where are the cows and the goats, so people don't misunderstand that it's...
Where are you located?
280 Wells Puls Cafe, where was the bison farm before.
Okay.
What is that?
The bison farm.
The bison farm. You're at the bison farms?
Yes. Well, I run the land from the people who want to...
Oh, you've got the animals right next door to the bison farm?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
Like the little fenced area?
Little pasture, okay.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay.
So this is a nonprofit that has been rescuing animals for 10 years. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We rescue animals, and we serve the community because we have visitors, kids, and if I have phone calls, we rescue all type of animal other than dogs. So somebody that lose, that find a chicken or a rabbit, brings the animals. So that's what we do. And of course, some people misunderstand, they believe the animals belong to Puls, and they don't. So that's why we'd like to have a sign in the field saying our name, very simple, just our name, Cloazac Animal Sanctuary with a logo. That's all.
This is the size of the sign?
Yeah.
It's too big.
Okay, I didn't know...
64 square feet.
64, so, well, is it a problem that it's long, or do you want me to have it medium size, like...
It doesn't, we don't care big, small, square, otherwise, as long as the sign itself is 64 square feet. This one is 80 square feet. 80 square feet.
Okay. The fact that it's not going to be close to the road, does it matter?
No. Unfortunately, we tried to make that not a problem before, but like I said, you heard me tell the gentleman, it was somebody who's set farther from the road, we wanted to allow larger signs, and town meeting didn't want that.
There would be no light. It's just my name, that's all.
Right, yeah.
So I have to reduce it to like 16 feet. I don't mind if it's not done.
If this was 15 feet by 4 feet, you'd be upset.
Yeah, that's what I would do. 15 feet by 4, I don't care. It's not printed yet, so...
Okay.
And it will be a very simple on wood. Just for the letter, it's sunrise printing, who's going to do, just the name will be in black on a material like that, on wood panel, that's all.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
So people know it's us and not Puls.
You've got to get a permit for that?
For the building inspector.
I'm sure, that's why I came.
Okay, okay.
How many animals?
Now, who is the big inspector? I have to go to the office.
Town Hall.
What kind of animals are you going to collect? Any kind?
No, no, I don't, it's not really collected.
Do we want to vote to approve it at 64 square feet, or do you want to, do we want to have him come back with revised plan?
If this guy has a harder goal than he's rescuing animals, I think we'd...
Thank you, well, we, I wish we stayed, for now, we'll run, but we'd like to buy the land, and that's the article of the papers, you know?
If he's going to keep this...
So you're looking for volunteers to help?
Oh, we have some, yeah. 15 by that, he was like...
My wife would love this.
She can come.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the sign, but not to exceed 64 square feet.
Second.
Okay.
This is your sign?
Yeah.
Building inspector is in the town hall.
Yeah, yeah, I went to the office, there were, woman told me to come tonight, that's why I came. I read the paper, I'm not familiar with it, I'm sure you have.
Okay.
You're going to take the vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, we got a motion in a second. All in favor? All right. Any poll? Motion passed.
You can keep that up.
Good luck to you.
It's not a question of luck, it's actually love. We love what we do.
Well, you're going to have luck with everything.
Well, we have, thank you. I appreciate it, and we love Habley.
All right, have fun.
Thank you. Nicole Blom?
Hi. Do I need to stand up there? Can I be talked to here?
Well, what do you want to talk about?
I'm not here to present any planning. I'm not here to present any planning things. I came, because I've been away for about five days, and I came home to, to the Gazette article that talked about what happened with Mr. Marchowski, and I felt compelled to come down here, and just, you know, state for the record that, how inappropriate I felt your statement was. And I understand that you said that you didn't intend to offend anybody. And whether that's true or not is kind of beside the point, because what was said indeed was very offensive and very racist. And, and I think it's imperative that you understand the implications of saying something like that, even if you believe it to be a joke, just like we don't, we don't, we don't do jokes like that anymore. Those days are gone, and I hope they stay gone. And it's important to learn that what you say matters to people, and even if these people said it, they weren't offended, you don't really know what they were thinking, they have to operate in this town, so we don't know. I don't understand what the joke was, but I do understand what the reference to cameras implies, and in this current climate of extreme homophobia and racism, I think it's really dangerous and totally unacceptable, and I'm just, I'm surprised you haven't apologized. It's actually very.
He did today.
Did you, you came in late to the meeting, didn't you?
I heard what you said, I didn't really hear an apology, it was more, it was more to me like he said he didn't feel like he did anything wrong.
Mr. Marchowski specifically said, "I apologize to anybody I offended." It's on tape.
Right, not apologize for what I said. To me, it's, you know, semantics, but it means something, so I just felt compelled to say for the record,
Okay.
as, you know, somebody who is representing our town and the workings of our town, I just think it's incredibly important to say.
Thank you for your.
Official moving date is April.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, but our next.
Next meeting's gonna be in the town hall.
Town hall, right. Take advantage of the wall to announce that this is our last meeting at Hooker School.
How many years have you been meeting here?
Uh, trying to remember.
You were at the town hall, Richard.
We're at the town hall, we've been here for fifteen years?
Fifteen years, yes.
I was in second grade in this room. This is Dan, this is the teacher.
Do you remember what year we moved here? We're talking about this being our last meeting.
Yes.
In Hooker School. When did we move here? While the original long-range plan was being discussed.
It's been, oh boy.
Between twelve and fifteen years, probably.
I gotta say, probably about twelve years, yeah. Yeah, it's been quite a while, actually. Okay, we will open the public hearing, if I can get the public notice, here we go. The Hadley Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, beginning at seven fifteen PM in the Hadley Senior Central Meeting Room. The purpose of the hearing is to review the application of DESCO medical equipment for special permits, site plan approval, business use in aquifer, and erosion and sediment control to construct approximately an eighty-three hundred square foot building on Venture Way. Application and plans may be viewed in the town clerk's office during normal business hours, published twice in the Gazette, March fourth and eleventh. You're up.
Hi, my name is John Kuhn, Kuhn of Architects, and to be here tonight. I'd like to present to folks that are here with me tonight, and then I'll give you a brief overview of the project, and we'll talk about the site, and then talk about more plans. I'm here with Andrea Bordenka, she is the president of DESCO. Eric Nelson, I'm sure you know, from West Mass Development, Bill Cannon, Lake Cannon, Loski Architects, and Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys. A brief overview about, yeah, in two thousand seventeen, Ms. Bordenka came to her office with her father, who founded DESCO forty-five years ago, and said they were interested in looking to build a building to move their business here to this area. It had been started in Norfolk, Mass, but Ms. Bordenka and her family had moved to Belchertown, and they were interested in the Amherst area to build their business and move their headquarters. So we sent them off to look at various pieces of property, including in Hadley, and they ended up working out a deal with, with West Mass Development for the, the West Mass Development Park, the parcel that is unoccupied at the present time. So we were charged with looking to design a building that, and you said eighty-three hundred square feet, the, I think the overall structure in two phases would be around ten thousand square feet. This first phase will be four thousand square feet. And the, the notion they put before us was that they would like to build a building that's ten thousand square feet eventually for their, for their use and perhaps with some other tenants, but only built about half of that at the present time. So currently, what we're looking at is approximately four thousand square foot building, which would be Phase One, and that would house the DESCO headquarters, and there'd be a small space for a tenant. So that is what you're looking at tonight. The project has already been presented to the Conservation Commission, and I think probably the best thing is to talk about the site first. I don't know if Bill or Mark is gonna do that presentation.
We're gonna do it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
And they can tell you what's been going on with this. The one thing we do have to do, which makes sense, is to develop the site, all the, the stormwater management has to be done for the larger building, it doesn't make sense to do, you know, a small piece of it now and do more earthwork later. So we're really doing that part of the site work, even for the small portion of the building that we're building now. It's a one-story building, slab on grade, and with that, I'll turn it over to you, and then I'll come back and.
Just for the record, sir?
Yes.
The eighty-three hundred comes from the application. Thirty-nine hundred and twenty-nine square foot Phase One, and a forty-four thirty square foot Phase Two, so roughly eighty-three, eighty-four hundred. So, and if it's ten thousand, it's not the end of the world, because we can cover that tonight, as long as you let us know what you're going to do, it's a formality.
Right.
Okay?
And the second phase, so the first phase is this section of the building, and then this is, so the building is really designed to be, so the second phase can be added easily. And the size of it may, may be massaged a little bit, perhaps at that time, when that is done, we'll know a little bit more about what the future holds for the, for the business and for any potential tenants, but.
Okay.
Good evening, like I said, my name's Mark Reed, I'm from Heritage Surveys, and I would just like to review the site with you all. And as we've discussed previously, this is a fourteen-acre site in which we're only gonna develop two acres of it.
Site as in that is, I mean.
This is the property that they are going to acquire.
Okay.
So, so the boundary lines of the parcel that DESCO will acquire is this entire piece of property from West Mass.
Okay.
Of which, we're only developing about two acres. So this overall plan, you know, shows a good relationship to, to the scope of the land itself and what is actually getting developed.
Is that because of that parcel, of that parcel that's all that's developable?
Yes.
Really?
So, in the, in the end result, after all these years of this piece of property, this is the only portion of the property that's left that could be developed. Over the years, the wetlands have grown. We were before the Conservation Commission last week to present a notice of intent and reviewed by them for the project, and that's an ongoing process that, that we're going to be finishing up at their next meeting in April. But the wetland boundaries have grown considerably from what was originally maintained as farmland and mowed. It has grown. There are three different stormwater detention basins on the property, which are part of the original subdivision, construction of the roadway and the site itself.
Those detentions, do they work for the rest of the building or the project?
So, no, they don't. These three basins are separate from the stormwater system that we're proposing for the building. This plan here is an enlarged plan that shows just our site, what we're developing, so that through our project in itself, we are proposing another stormwater detention area, which would be a pond, similar to what's out there now, which would be in the back of the DESCO building, under a full buildup. This shows a full, like John was mentioning, this is Phase One and Phase Two portion of the building itself, with associated parking, meets your two-to-one ratio, in excess of about three thousand square feet extra for your, for your parking requirements.
Are you putting any underground storage in, in, is it gonna go into that detention pond?
It's gonna go into the detention pond.
From the underground storage?
Correct, because of the soil conditions that are out there, they're very height, they're very tight, heavy soils, clays and silt. Clays and silt.
So it can't perk?
It won't perk, it will not perk, unfortunately. So that the stormwater system for the project gets relatively large when doing that.
So if it can't perk there, how can it perk out in the detention pond?
So, the pond is designed to handle the storm event. When you do drainage calculations, you do it between the, what is currently running off the property, which the flow of the water right now flows this way towards the wetlands, in this direction, and the size of the basin is sized in such that you won't have any in-store water runoff from the project in itself, between pre-development and post-development.
Does any of that water that's on that plant gonna end up in those other detention ponds?
It's gonna go into the wetlands, so that the runoff from the pond itself will go into these wetlands here. It may eventually get to either one of these two, these, I'm sorry, one of these two detention ponds. It'd be overland flow, sheet flow, DEP is encouraging everything to be just spread out and might be vegetated.
So the whole project is a sheet flow?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, there's no structures, stormwater structures, touch basins or any of that stuff.
There's no oil retention basin or sediment basins? Everything drains into that pond?
There are sediment basins, there's what they call four bays to take care of any of that type of material.
Where would they be?
So they're located here and here, behind the building, before it gets discharged into the pond. There is a drainage channel that flows around the building that takes the water from the front parking lot and flows around into what is known as a four bay that will take care and settle out those materials.
So those bays are maintained on a regular basis?
Correct.
That settlement, what is, what is?
There's an, there's an operation.
What period do you do that?
So, so, under an operation and maintenance project, or plan that is a part of the project in itself, you do inspections four times a year, visual inspections, and then, if needed, depending on what materials are in there, if you got some sand or other materials, you remove those as needed.
Are they mowed or something like that?
Correct.
Are all the areas around mowed?
Correct, everything is mowed.
Okay.
Everything is mowed around it, just not the wa, of course, the water surface is not.
Does the town get, like, the maintenance?
Yes, it is part of the original submission to the board, as our stormwater, it was in our stormwater application for the project. This is a set of more definitive plans that we have submitted to the board that outlines all the construction-related aspects of it, so that, being a cover sheet.
Is anyone here from West Mass?
Yes.
Eric?
Eric Nelson's here.
I thought.
Yes.
I almost wanna say.
Question?
No. The fact that you've almost abandoned this property, nothing was done to it, when you get fourteen acres and all of a sudden you only have two that is really developable, because someone didn't pay attention to the drainage, the flow. We can't do anything about it now, but it's, it's an example of benign neglect.
But Joe, that's happening throughout the whole town, the whole drainage.
I, I, I agree.
Let the man answer, was, is that really what happened to him?
Well, we've been marketing this, and we've had several, as you know, we've been in front of the board several times with potential developments that haven't borne fruit. So, you know, abandonment, I would, I would quite agree with abandonment, but parcels like this are a challenge because it is at the low point of this area, the slow conditions have, have its challenges too. So it's one of those things where, over time, and I haven't, we, Bill and I talked on the phone, and we, you know, this was the nineties when this, this project came on, and I've been with West Mass for seven years, so we've been, in the last, you know, years that I've been going, I think we brought a couple of things to the, to the board for approval. So, the wetlands have grown, they are a challenge, they're a challenge everywhere because you just can't, you're, it's an uphill battle against nature, in a lot of ways. But I agree with you, it's, it had potential years ago that isn't, this is the best potential that we can get on it today.
Yeah, we have to accept what it is, but.
Right.
Okay.
Meeting the requirements of the Wetlands Protection Act and the current regulations, which we all know change over the years, and we're better for work.
Of course.
So I just wanted to kinda flip through a couple of the pages here to talk about.
Well, Mark, the overall projection that you laid before us, that's for the ten thousand square feet.
Correct.
When you come back, you just say, "We wanna add, the site work has been done," and so it's not a repeat of the whole site plan approval, but the drainage includes the potential ten thousand square feet building.
Correct.
Okay.
And all of the site will be prepared for the Phase Two construction. So that this requires some fill material to be brought in to build this building, it's gonna be brought in under Phase One, so that all that is needed for, is we're requesting from the board, an approval of both phases, full buildup for the site itself and the stormwater system, and then, when the time comes for Phase Two building construction, we foresee that the building inspector could issue a building permit, and we come back to the board and say, "We're ready to go with the Phase Two building." No changes have been made, or if there are changes, we'll bring those up to you at that point in time and start building the building. There won't be any site work relative to that, with the exception of actually paving the parking area. Under Phase One, we're not gonna pave all the parking up front, we're only gonna pave the front section.
Will you lose, between Phase One and Phase Two, whatever that timeframe could be, when you're, two years, ten years, will you lose any property by overflow of the wetlands or anything like that?
We don't anticipate that.
What are you gonna do to prevent that?
By granting the permit and the design that we have, we're gonna manage the property in such a way that we won't lose it. And keep those permits active. Conservation Commission, when they approve this project, there's three years in which to build it. If Phase Two doesn't happen in three years, we, we can request from the Conservation Commission. If Phase Two doesn't happen in three years, we, we can request from the Conservation Commission another two-year extension, so that give a little bit more time for that project to get built. Same would apply with the planning board.
Planning board is three years.
Correct. So, so yes, we want, we're cognizant of that, making sure that we can build what we wanna do in the, now and in the future. So the biggest, John mentioned earlier, the biggest hurdle is the stormwater system and the pond that's being constructed in here. And we're going through a process, and we're still unfortunately going through the process, of working out all the details to make sure that not only DEP is satisfied in all the regulations, but the peer reviewer, who is Dusset Associates, is satisfied with all the concerns that they, that are part of the regulations. The regulations are extensive and we're trying to be cost-sensitive and also making sure that it complies with the regulations.
Is this project subjected to MS4 regulations? Stormwater drainage?
It is, but this design meets those requirements. And we're not connecting anything into the city system, with the exception of potentially, we're having a discussion back and forth, about every 10 years or so, the pond itself has to get drained and cleaned, if needed. And that has to be drained somewhere. And there is the ability of draining it down to the ponds that you were talking about earlier, that are further in the back of the property.
How long would there be water in a pond? Is it pretty much all the time?
Yes. Yeah, the pond, the pond would be a pond.
How deep?
So it's three feet deep.
Is there a fence around it?
Yes, there is.
There's gonna be.
There will be a fence around. Yes.
In the dry weather, it could evaporate?
We don't feel it will because of the heavy soils.
Okay.
And what we've seen across the street with American River and that stormwater system, for the most part, because of the soils.
Well, American River put it as recently, and last year was no year to evaporate anything.
Correct. Yeah, right. The year prior to that, it was still wet.
So the cattails and all that, it's gonna grow out of there and not stand it?
So cattails will not grow out of the pond area itself because it's too deep. The water's too deep. Cattails are only.
On the edge of it?
At the edge of it, there, there will be plantings, what they call an aquatic shelf, 10 foot wide. There's plantings so that there will be a variety of vegetation planted in that area.
Will they be maintained?
Yes.
They don't go wild or go higher or what?
Correct. That's part of the program that is being proposed.
There's gonna be a regular maintenance program on that?
Yes.
For the season?
They will have to be in order to keep the pond working correctly for the stormwater management of the whole site.
Other parts of the plan are, again, construction-related activities. We do have, you know, of course sewer and water. What we had talked about prior to or at our last meeting is the ability of getting gas service to the building. I heard a rumor the other day in Springfield at a meeting, that they're thinking about lifting it. I don't know if they are.
That's a heck of a rumor.
Yeah, right.
That's a nasty rumor.
Wild rumor.
Yeah, so let's hope so. It's probably, it's probably in Springfield only.
Right.
And not up in our area. So that we're proposing propane tank that's going to be installed back here.
Underground or?
To serve above ground?
Above ground.
Above ground. And we know we have to go between, before the fire chief or fire department and the select board for approval of that tank.
You mentioned sewer.
Yes.
I know there's a pump station right there. Is that gonna be gravity or injection pump?
Nope, it's gravity system. So there's a sewer manhole out in the street and there's the ability of gravity flow to the sewer manhole down to, right here is the pump station.
Lot cheaper to maintain.
Yes. Yes. There will be both domestic and fire because under Phase Two of the building, it puts it over the requirement, it has to be sprinklered. So we have both domestic and fire connection to the building for future.
Are they making you put a grease trap or anything in there to store it? No?
There is really not the ability because.
There's no cooking facility in it.
Right. Yeah, there's no need to, there's no kitchen, there's no commercial kitchen or, or any of that aspect of it. Part of the, the plans are a lighting plan to make sure it complies with keeping the lighting on the site and not spilling out to the abutting properties and/or street. All the lighting poles will be shielded.
Any lighting will shoot up in the air?
No.
What kind of light fixtures?
There's shoebox.
Good.
There's a, there's a detail on the plans that illustrate the type of fixture that we're, we specified.
Shoebox style.
Yes.
Pardon? We like the shoebox.
Yeah, it's got, it's, it's what I call a hooded type of fixture. It's got a solid roof to it so that the light casts directly down and is controlled to direct it onto the pavement. So we can preserve the dark sky admittance and everything else. There's about, there's five light fixtures we're proposing in the parking lot in Phase One and five light fixtures that we'll be putting along the parking lot in Phase Two. And the light fixtures, the poles will be 15 feet high to comply with the zoning. So they're not big, you know, big.
You're not gonna carry out some kind of light, light itself?
The light itself, we have specified a, they're LED lights, 150 watts. In terms of LED, they're, you know, it's a different kind of nomenclature they use where it's like 3,500 lumens and everything else. But we were requested by West Mass to spec out a, a light admittance that's kind of a warmer glow type of effect, rather than the bright stark white color. So that, that information is on the plan.
The color is gonna be different than most other ones?
Well, it, yeah, it, it's a fairly isolated site, so it's not gonna kind of, you know, conflict with other light around and everything else. It's quite a distance between parking areas and everything else. But it'll be a warmer, more sensitive, softer type of light admittance from the light fixtures.
Will the lights turn on and dust and?
They'll all be photocelled. They'll all be photocelled, so they will.
So just in the dark, that's all?
Correct.
Soon as light comes, they automatically shoot out?
Yeah, right. Right. Unless, you know, there, there's night activity, which they can put, they can have manual override on for keeping the lights on when there is some night activity going on.
So at night, they're not gonna be on?
They, they will be for the use of the building. If somebody's using the building at night, yes, they will be.
So everything is activated around these?
Correct.
There will be security lighting, of course, that will be on all night long.
Yeah, there's no point in having the lights on all night long and everything else if there's nothing going on, you know, so.
Right. While we're at that, just purely, what does Desco do?
Yeah, that's my question.
It stands for Diagnostic Equipment Service Corporation. And they service diagnostic-type equipment in hospitals and doctors' offices.
So they don't have to make anything? They're more of a service company?
Exactly.
Okay.
And they also train, they train individuals to work on that equipment, so there's a, there's a training room, if you will, with that type of thing. There's only five or so employees in this, in this location, but they have employees all over the, they have, what, nine states, I think, from Pennsylvania and Jersey, maybe.
Yeah, so we operate in 15 states. So this is mostly for our customer service reps, our dispatchers, who when an OR table breaks, they call the office and the dispatchers will dispatch the specialists to go to that particular site. So we're in anywhere from, you know, two to five hospitals or surgery centers per tech, per, per day. So like John mentioned, there's a space, a workshop space where we're gonna have equipment like EKGs and defibrillators to, to offer training to new employees. But we're also in a conversation with Springfield Technical Community College and some of the local schools to help their students have some hands-on technical experience in this facility as well. So that's why we're thinking in, you know, five years or so, the Phase Two and just being ready to, to build out and doing everything that we can because there's just so many opportunities in this area for us to increase the visibility of what we do and also partner with a lot of the local schools and businesses to, to utilize this space.
You're a very high-end service company.
Yeah.
It's a good way of putting it.
It is, yeah.
That's not something you're gonna send, you know, it's, you're not, you know, tools are unique.
Do you guys offer anything to, like, the local fire department, C and D for members, in the community?
We don't yet, but we are open to those types of collaborations, absolutely. Because they have.
That's a good idea to me.
Yeah, it does sound like, we just hired someone who is the chief at the, is it Montague Fire Department? So he's actually gonna be one of our customer service reps. So I can have a conversation with him about it. That's a great idea. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Part of this is a landscape plan that Bill prepared. And he can speak to that if you have any questions on it. It's part of the application. There'll be a series of trees and plantings throughout the site that are required.
Yeah, just.
Just kinda highlights on that.
Yeah, just briefly, you can see on this plan right in here where. I'm sorry, I'm kinda.
Joe, hey, gentlemen, please. Stay on one topic at a time. You can ask another question otherwise.
I, I think of this plan right in here, because of the color differentiation, you can kind of, it kinda illustrates what we're talking about for new plantings, which are highlighted in the, in the bright green color. So, we've introduced some woody plant material into the site for shade trees, native shade trees that we're gonna be putting in islands in the parking lots and around the building. Also, native shrub plantings, which will be along the front of the building, foundation of the building. And we've also, I've also kind of located in some areas, some, some daylily plantings and everything else to create kind of a very naturalistic type of setting for this development. Just to get ahead of myself a little bit, you can kinda see by the architectural drawing that's on the floor there, that it's a one-story building. It's, 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 I, I had designed the landscape and everything else to kinda marry in with the scale of this building. It's, you know, because it's not brick or any kind of formal material and everything else. It's, this is, the atmosphere that we're trying to create here is a lot more relaxed and kind of in keeping with Desco's working environment and everything else. We've even included in the back of the Phase One building, an outdoor sitting area, so that they could kinda have outdoor classes and everything else too. So that, that's shown on the plan as well. But just that, in general, that's what we're kinda talking about. Now, we've also, Mark mentioned something. We'll be introducing new plantings into the stormwater management plan as well. We've created and designed plantings to work in with the, the pond, the stormwater pond for the site. We have a series of long elongated swales that will convey the runoff from the parking lots to the detention basin area. And we've spec out, specified some growing medium to be installed in the bottom of those swales that'll enhance growth of grassy, grasses. And we've, I've even specked out a mix of grass with a little blue stem and it will, which will be of a plant-type, the higher knee-high type of planting that I think will have a nice contrast with some of the more higher main, maintenance-type of lawn areas and add some visual interest to the site as well. So that's basically kinda what we're thinking about doing with the landscaping for the site.
Where is your snow storage? And what do you do, if anything, with the salt that you use to melt it?
So the plans, the site plans show different areas on the site for snow storage and it is on sheet. Sheet L 3.0. We have areas for snow storage on either side of the end of the parking. And envisioning that snow plowing activities would be plowing in this direction. So the snowplow, or snow, storage areas are located here. We have a snow storage area located on this side, as well as in the back of the, this parking area.
That's off the parking lot?
Correct. It's off, in the, in the lawn area.
Is the Conservation Commission making you do anything to treat the salt that's gonna go in there that you're gonna use in the parking lot?
Right now, it's all going to be going into vegetated areas that will treat it before it ever gets down into the pond. So, and through that process.
So none of the snow is gonna take up any parking?
Correct. As of right now, and it all is weather-dependent on a different.
And even as it's built out in its capacity?
Right. We envision trying to maintain the parking spaces needed. As mentioned, we have, you know, five employees. We have an awful lot of parking spaces that are available. So that if needed, if we have an extreme winter like we had a couple of years ago, some of that will have to be moved as needed.
But the way it is without employees there, you got plenty of movement.
Correct.
Without doing anything.
Yep.
Yeah, the way, the way we've calculated out the parking, the way the parking ratio has turned out because of your requirement for the parking to be twice the area of the building, we had, we show 55 parking spaces, 22 of which are in the first phase. And as we've previously mentioned, you'll probably have about four or five employees for the Desco part of it. They, they won't be occupying this whole building in Phase One. They may be sharing that a little bit, so there's additional parking for a secondary tenant to utilize that Phase One parking. So that, that comes out, so with that 55 parking spaces, there's three handicap parking spaces. That calculates out to one space per 150 square feet, which, based on what I do for plan and everything else, is, is, is pretty commodious. It's, that's a lot of parking. Usually, you're in the, the one, one space per 200 or 300 square feet for a building. So we really feel we have more than adequate number of parking spaces to service this building.
You realize that if you don't need them, you don't really wanna put them in, you don't have to. You can, in other words, you need to design for the two-for-one.
Right.
Let's say you're putting in, you know, 55, just a news number, 55 parking spaces. If you feel you only need 40, you could only put in 40 and you can just put the others as reserves and use it as greens, just make it grass.
That, that may, it may come, but not knowing where we're coming with tenant required, future tenant requirements and everything else, we don't know where that would come. So, like, like we've done with the site for the Phase One and Phase Two and the, the stormwater management plan, we've done so with the parking. I, I think that would be great. If we don't need all the parking, you know, why pave it all and everything else? And, and we could kinda devote it to more open space. It'd certainly help out with the impact on the stormwater management side of things.
But for the first phase, I think 22 spaces is.
I'm just making that comment. I'm gonna try to give you direction. We're saying that it's not unusual for a company to say, "We really don't need X number of space. We only need so much." Then design for it, but don't put it in and just leave it as grass or, you know, whatever.
I, I think that's a, that's a great thought and that may be pursued. Again, it's gotta be all depending on, you know, what, some of the tenant space as well.
You may be miscontrolling what Jim has said. You still have to calculate the drainage as if the full parking were there.
Yes.
And we've done that, yes.
We've done that, right.
Yes, we've done that, right. No, we've done it, we've done it on the 55 cars, which is what the requirement, that meets all your requirements.
The reason for that is. The reason for that is, buildings and Halle, one day it's a, it's an auto parts shop, and next day it's a restaurant, it overwhelms the parking.
Yeah.
And so we have a flat saying, a flat statement, two-for-one. Sometimes it's more than enough, and sometimes it's barely enough. So, you know, the uses change, it's, it is the nature of the business.
Right.
And, you know, we, we're concerned about designing for, in this case, yeah, you've got a, a light customer base and a light parking use, and, yeah, you're in a bit of a different area, I don't, I'm not gonna disagree with that, where you're probably gonna be putting a restaurant down there, but other places along Route Nine, you can see where we're coming from.
Sure, sure.
Are you guys gonna put any restrictions on a secondary tenant? Like, if it's gonna be all medical, or it's gonna be anything?
Well, maybe Andrea could speak to the tenant that you do have in here.
Yeah, so there is, it's about a 300 square foot area for the tenant space, and she runs a performance, peak performance coaching, so she works with athletes, and she works with people of all ages, kids and adults as well, so she's gonna be using that space for her, her coaching and her consulting. So, I'm not, I mean, ideally, I have people who are, you know, there's some kind of complementary, we can collaborate together in some way, but it's not a deal breaker. I'm open.
Well, we, it was clear when we, when Mark and I approached you way in the beginning that any, any future tenants would be subject to, you know, coming before the planning board and being approved by you guys.
Because of any...
Yes, well...
And obviously, coaching is not allowed.
Good.
The other part of the plans within here are construction-related, and then at the end of the set are the building plans, that I can let John show you the building at this point, unless there's other questions.
The construction plans were not really, they're more for the building, like to see it.
Yeah, so I'll let John take it from here.
Before, before I get into the floor plans, I wanted to make, mention two other site-related things. One is that the building's going to be constructed by Taggert Construction in Amherst, and we are looking currently at two options for heating and cooling the building. One is propane, but the other would be solar and electric. So if we end up going that route, then we won't need the propane tank here, so I'm just mentioning that. And the second thing is, the first phase of the building isn't large enough that it requires a sprinkler, but once an addition's put on and the building is over 7,500 square feet, it would need to be a sprinkler. So we will be bringing a sprinkler line in now, and probably stubbing it right here, so that should they build Phase Two, they don't have to rip up the whole thing to put the sprinkler line in. So that will be done as part of Phase One.
What's that, an eight-inch line?
Probably a six.
So, are you putting sprinklers in Phase One?
No. We'll put, we'll retrofit them at that time.
It's a six-inch, it's shown as a six-inch line coming in.
If you put so, will it be on a roof or on the ground?
It will be on the roof.
Yeah, that's, that's a simple building for me.
So the floor plan, this is, this is facing the street, and this is the front entrance right here, it's a vestibule, this is sort of an entrance lobby, and the tenant that Andrea was talking about is right here. She's got a little vestibule and an office, and there's a small kitchenette that's open to kind of, to the public area. And then this hallway comes down to the, this meeting room that we were talking about. And this is where Phase Two would go, so that this hallway here would become the connection to the second phase. So Desco is occupying this area here. They have a loading area right here, this is the workshop that Andrea was talking about. There's two bathrooms, a conference room, her office, and then room for four other employees. And then this common meeting room is where she would have training facilities. This door leads out to the outdoor meeting area that Bill spoke about. And then this area could also be used for the tenant, so they would have to coordinate timing, but that would allow Desco to be closed and the tenant to come in and you do her training in here, have people, so that the building can be used at various times of the day. They obviously have to coordinate when this space is used, but the bathrooms are right here for that, so this public space can be open while this is closed. It's one-story, as we've mentioned, the exterior, we really designed this to have sort of a, the tobacco barn, I guess, would be sort of the building prototype that we started with and the basic proportions of that. It's gonna have a hardy plank siding that's red, black windows, and then an appropriate shingle roof. I think it's a very clean-looking building. It will not have an internally lit sign, I can tell you that. It will just, it's a wood sign here with, with three lights over it, and I think there's a sign out by the front road as well.
That's like a little style...
Address.
Store. That's what it reminds me of.
Good.
It's definitely different, I mean, I'm not, I like the look, I'm not, I don't need to criticize it at all, but it just, it's a, it's a very different look than we're used to for any kind of a business or industrial use, for sure.
Well, that's what the client asked for, and we felt it was appropriate.
The only thing you're missing that is a cool...
Ah, here we go.
Hey, that wasn't gonna get you, you were waiting for that.
If tobacco prices keep going where they're going, you might wanna put Phase Two now, now the tobacco...
Maybe so.
That's cigar tobacco.
So I think that's the thrust of our presentation, and we're happy to answer any other questions you might have.
So, John mentioned the, a secondary sign out on the site. It's, it is shown on the site plans, it's along the driveway, and what we pictured is just strictly kind of an address number, it'd be 200 on there, not, nothing, you know, showy with, you know, big long elongated signs or any of that type of stuff.
Once you get the sign designed, just come back, we'll approve it, except for the signs.
It's strictly, yeah.
When you, when you, when you get the design, we'll just come in as a matter of the informal session.
That, that, there's a detail that's shown on the plans, it's the way we currently have envisioned it. If it's gonna change, we'll come back to the plan.
So, do we have a final peer review letter on this one?
We do not. We're in the process of working out the final details with DuSet, so unfortunately, tonight we do not have a peer review letter. So we would ask to be continued to your meeting, your next meeting.
Or, or approved as a condition for that as a...
That's...
I knew that was gonna be.
I don't, I don't really like doing it. I like to see what's on paper before we have a final stamp to it.
We've got a mighty busy agenda for the next meeting, that's the only problem.
Mark, do you know the, do you know the timeline on that, Mark?
We could, we could do it in a month or less, the third meeting, yeah, the third Tuesday in April, but this meeting in, the first, the first meeting in Tues, the first meeting in April, we already have three public hearings, and two of them are going to be lengthy.
One concern we do have is, we'd like to get in the ground soon, as you can imagine, and I assume there'll be some sort of appeal period, 20-day appeal period after the signing of the...
After the, after the issuing of the special permit, it's written up, after it's recorded with the town clerk.
Right. And that wouldn't happen at the next meeting, that we'd have to wait until the...
That's typically up to a week or so afterward to get it typed up and everything.
We vote at, at the meeting, so we don't have to bring it back for further. We'll, we'll close, we can close the public hearing and vote if we are ready.
Are you guys all done with the, the concom?
No, we, we will, they continued their meeting until their next meeting, which is April 9th, is their next Conservation Commission meeting, so that we anticipate being approved at that meeting on the 9th.
That's the second Tuesday of April.
Correct.
So if you came back on a third Tuesday, one week later, with everything, including a concom, we could give you an approval at that point.
That'll work out for you guys? Don't say no. Don't say no.
So, okay, that was a question I had, is that the planning board would like to have conservation approval before you approve?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay.
Not necessarily.
Okay, but I understand your meeting on the 2nd is full.
We have, we do coordinate to some extent with the Conservation Commission, so they would, they would tell us what, what needed to be looked at, and they can give us an idea of how much they think they...
Right. At the last meeting with the Conservation Commission, they had no other issues with the project, just waiting for the final review from DuSet.
Would they have their determination written out for our, our meeting following?
They meet the week before.
I believe that their decisions are written up to be signed by all, by each member of the board, so even if they have voted it, they won't have it ready. But Janice can, Stone can tell me what it is going to be.
Right.
She can provide a sample, perhaps. We, on the other hand, take the vote, and then I, as clerk, certify that this is the vote that was taken.
Okay.
So it doesn't need to be signed by everyone.
Once we vote, Bill gets it written up, he signs it, goes to the town clerk for filing, and then it, the 20-day start comes, starts to count.
Just to be clear, you're talking a continuance of this public hearing to the 16th of April?
Correct.
And Mark, do we have time, do we have a timeline on the peer review? Will they, will the peer review letter be done in plenty of time for the...
Yes.
April 9th meeting?
Yes, it will be. We hope to...
Within that work, that...
Yeah, yes.
We, we hope to have that within a week or two. There's some minor caveats to the DEP stormwater management regulations that we're working out, and that's the only shortfall or pickup right now. Trying to get through those.
Seven o'clock, 7:50?
7:15, and we'd just like tonight, we, the public session, as soon as we're done talking with people, we'd get right to the earths.
Okay.
Do you have any other concerns aside from the hearing?
No, I mean, you've done a wonderful job of presenting, and everything is in order, and if you had the peer review letter, you'd be walking away with a, with an approval tonight. But unfortunately, the reviewing engineers are what they are.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, 16th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yep. Okay. We did get a letter from Attorney Joel Barge, I don't know if you're aware of it, I don't really know of it, but a while ago, we approved a parking lot for the proposed apartment complex in Amherst, that the parking would be in Halle, remember that?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, evidently, that was appealed.
Behind the medical marijuana place.
Right, yeah. That was appealed, we didn't know that, I didn't know that it was appealed, did you know it was appealed, Bill?
Yeah, I knew it had been appealed, but it was primarily the apartment complex that was being appealed.
Right, but somehow, because we have the parking for it, we got, we didn't have much of a, we didn't have anything to do with the appeal, but we were involved in it because they're, they're together, they're the one project.
What's the name of it?
Um, or is that... I saw the name, Aspen Heights, A-S-P-E-N Heights.
They appealed what, Halle's?
They appealed the issuance of the special permit to the town, from the town of Amherst.
And ours.
And ours, because we have, the parking is part of the project, but the town, as far as I know, Joel was pretty much just an oh-by-the-way. I don't know that we, I don't know if the town sent much of any money defending it because it's nothing to defend, it was all about the town of Amherst. Anyways, getting back to Joel's comment, he simply was informing us that the above litigation for the planning board, this matter is very likely going to be remanded to the board in the near future. This is the appeal, by and of butter, for the planning board's approval, a limited part of the so-called Aspen Heights project, most of which is in Amherst. This morning, I participated in a telephone status conference with counsel for all parties. Counsel for the plaintiff and the developer reported they have resolved their differences, but they propose to have the case remanded to Halle Planning Board and the Amherst ZBA to present modifications to the plan. I did not have any information to the, on the proposed changes. The court welcomed the report, Judge yada, 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 and so, basically, Joel is saying, when he knows more, or they'll, they'll come back to us, he'll let us know. So he said, they're probably, oh, we're gonna only have 45 days from the date that they come to make, make the request, to, I guess we're gonna hold a new public hearing?
Probably.
And so we're gonna advertise it and notify the butters, and we'll have to do that within 45 days of the time that they come to see us.
And that was a real nuisance, because there are...
They notified...
The butters are the condo owners.
They...
Condo owners for Greenlee.
There was, I believe...
Ninety?
There was three pages, 36, 90, yes, there was, there was 90, there was 90 of butters to the project, because there was three of those mailing labels, and there's 30 mailing labels on a sheet, and there was three sheets of them. It was like, and I got to think, I thought there was, you know, I thought there was enough, particularly they gave us two, and so I was gonna, you know, okay, half of these are Bill's, I'm looking at them, I said, wait a minute, these are all different addresses. It took, there was a lot of, lot of, lot of envelopes going out for that one. Excuse me.
Isn't that kind of tight time to get all the stuff done?
Originally, you were only gonna give us 30 days, and town, Bill, Joel, Joel got them to agree to 45 days. Yes, it is tight, that's why I'm saying, when it comes in, we have 45 days to hold the public hearing and schedule it, schedule it and hold it.
When will that come, will that come in on, on one of our meetings or not, or we miss it and then you lose?
Well, whenever it comes in, Jim can send out, you know, just pick a date and send out the legal notices.
Yeah, I'm assuming they're gonna come to, come at one of the regular meetings and apply, and hopefully, that's, that's a concern I have, to make sure that we, we're within the 45 days.
Can we, can we make a motion, if he gets it, he's gonna get, get the mailings out, that's the key thing?
Yeah.
Can we just authorize it to do it?
Yeah, we don't need a meeting to authorize Jim to, to get the mailings out.
Yeah.
We don't need a motion.
We don't?
I expect that we'll be coordinating, Tom Reedy was the attorney for the project, so...
Okay, that's right.
I'm sure he is interested in keeping this on track, so...
Tom knows how to get hold of either one of all of us.
Who's the attorney for the people appealing?
It was, I think it was...
Coligan versus Planning Board Land Court.
When did you get that?
We got this on Tuesday, we got this, when did we get this? We just got this a couple of days ago, yesterday, Monday. We got this yesterday.
Well, I would hope that you, do we have that, did you give it to the rest of the board or not?
They just sent it out to us, I was gonna bring it to light and read, but I can, I can forward a copy to everybody.
Yeah, I'd like to read that kind of stuff.
Well, here.
All right.
Okay.
I like reading the letter stuff.
Boy.
Right.
The fire substation is asked to be moved.
To 42.
Which is one of the busy ones.
And the next one is the executive session.
Executive session. Do we have anything we want to do, just, well...
Oh, we did get some comments from a, from Shell, or it's, on some comments on the planning, on the medical, not, not the medical, the adult-use marijuana. Some of them, I think, make sense, I was going to incorporate them. However, there were a couple here that I had a question on. He asked, he's making a suggestion that we add pre-K to the K through 12, I thought that was a pretty good idea, so I was glad that.
What's that one?
This is medical, the adult-use marijuana, he made a few comments on a few different sections that, you know...
Pre-K what, not to be close?
No, not to be close, right now we got a, that a medical marijuana facility can't be close to, what, I think it's 500 feet to a K through 12. He suggested we add pre-K.
Why don't you just put all educational, all in Glu-All?
No, but there was a limitation in the state recommendations, you, it means this, but not that.
but not that, not nurse, daycares.
We added, we added a registered daycare center to the, to that list and we're, I'm just asking the, the board, do they think we should add pre-K and instead of K through 12, should it be pre-K through 12?
Why not?
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see a problem with that, you know. Then he had two other areas that we have, that if the facility changes manager or something happens that they have, they have to do something within a certain timeframe. And he says, should there be an out clause for an emergency, for example, an accident or illness or firing for cause? And that, that applied to two different sections. I, I just thinking that that kinda might be splitting here, but I'm not sure.
Doesn't the state law cover all that?
Well, that, that's, that's kinda, we're duplicating the state law in many instances in that.
Right.
I don't think I would worry about that. It's probably a rare...
Okay. Okay. All right, very good.
Jim, what's the regulation on him?
There is him. The, I believe the regulation on him is that they need to notify the Board of Selectmen, I'm not positive on this, the Board of Selectmen, the Leash Chief, that they are going to grow him and they get some kind of a state permit.
So we have nothing to do with issuing permits?
No, not on him. Hemp is, hemp, even though it's related to marijuana, it's a different, hemp is an agriculture, considered an agricultural crop, to what I understand.
I just seen some advertised for eggs and pains with hemp.
There's a, there's a place, as you go, North Light Corners is in Granby?
Yep.
As you go, I think it's West Street or East Street that you get on when you go, you take that left to go out toward Ludlow and Granby. There's a fence on the right-hand side that's got these, there's three signs about, this is a U.S. government, something or other, Department of Agriculture, there's a hemp, there's a, about hemp, growing hemp on that property. Wherever I drive by, I, I mean, it's, I never noticed, I mean, I would know hemp if it's still, if it's still next to me, but evidently they grow hemp there and it's just a notification that they grow hemp. Okay.
Okay. So do you wanna go to the executive session?
What about passing about a minutes?
Oh, yes, we have the minutes approved. We have one, we have our, Mr. John, so I...
I would like to work with John on the, on the formatting a little more. I don't think that this, I wish he was here, I don't think this is ready to be voted on, but it is, you know, he, it's a good start. He and I have been emailing and I'm gonna...
Why can't he just, give him a sample of the many...
I will, John.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just saying this is not ready to be voted. As you pointed out, it doesn't have who was here and everything, so...
I assume, he's got a couple absents here, I assume that's me, and I was here to vote on those particular things, okay? Melissa Teff, Phil O'Brien, he's got me absent, I just had to excuse myself from the...
Okay, so, yeah, there's some terminology stuff, so, yeah, they're not ready. Bill, I will work with John.
Okay.
And we will, we will get that edited.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, sorry to make this an option.
Okay, well, so, I have the, I have the whole thing. So the agenda item is...
An executive session for the purposes of discussing a complaint brought against a public officer.
So do we need to count on that or do you have potential of...
So let me fill in some of this stuff. 319, I will make a motion that the planning board enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing complaint. And the question is, will we or will we not convene, reconvene in open session?
I think we'll reconvene.
And to convene in open session. So that is the motion.
Why are we gonna reconvene?
Just to let people know what we said, if anything.
Okay, that's it, okay.
Okay, so that's the motion. Is there a second to the motion? Roll call vote, Maximowski?
Yes.
Dwyer, yes. Zagradnik?
Yes.
Szydinski?
Yes.
Michikowski?
Abstaining.
Does that mean you do not want to go into open session or executive session?
I don't know what you're going really, what it's for.
He wants to abstain.
Okay, I just wanna be clear, I just wanna be very clear, you're abstaining on the vote to go into executive session, but you are not asking to...
I'm not voting against, not...
Okay, okay. All right.
Okay. As Chairman of the Halle Planning Board, I publicly, publicly state, one, that there has been a motion made and seconded to enter into executive session; two, that the planning board has voted to enter into executive session; three, that the purpose for executive session is to discuss a complaint about an elected official; four, that the discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the planning board litigation position; and five, that the planning board will reconvene in open session. Okay?
Okay.
We'll go to our room and we will be back.
The planning board met in executive session and we have the following statements. We as a board regret the comments made by one member of the planning board, they have given the impression that our board would not give a fair hearing to ma, to any matter before us. This is not who we are. We have no other comments, that's it.
You might have just mentioned to those who tuned in late that Mr. Michikowski did make a statement at the beginning.
That he did apologize for his comments to anybody that he offended, he did not mean to do it, and he apologized. And if you're on YouTube, go to the beginning of the YouTube tape and you'll see that. Any other board, any other business?
Is John all cleared with the minutes?
Oh, John's gonna, Bill's gonna get in touch with you for the...
Yeah, we're gonna work on formatting of the minutes and some things that...
I heard you come down here, sorry I missed that.
Okay, that's fine. We appreciate as much as you've done so far, it looks good.
Yeah, good start, good. Thank you.
Are we gonna authorize him to continue doing the minutes now? If Bill gives him the format, why would he gonna wait?
I think we did vote to do three, three months, three months, or three sessions, so there are two more sessions that we've already voted to do.
Yeah.
We'll work on that, I'll work on that with John.
Okay.
Will we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Meeting is history, thank you and thank you, John.
Is it, we still on?
It can be.
Can you put it still on, just one, I just wanna make one comment, that this is our last meeting in the senior center, beginning the first meeting in April, all of our meetings, the planning board meeting will be in a second for the town hall. Okay, that's all.